Oh, man. Well, good evening. We're gonna open this meeting of the Temecula City Council. And I want to thank Joshua Jukowski, who played the guitar for us. So, thank you. Thank you, Joshua. Thank you all. This evening, we're gonna have our invocation by Father Andrew Lesko of St. Nicholas Greek Orthodox Church. And, oh my goodness, look at this.
Blame my mother.
Baklava. And you know what? It seems like some really giant mice have broken into the baklava this evening. Mr. Washington, Mr. Roberts. But this is spectacular. Thank you very much.
Like I said, you have to blame my mother. Because she said, whenever you visit someone, you have to bring a gift.
Oh, we love that. Thank your mother very much, on behalf of the city council and all the little fat mice up here who've already broken into the package. So, after we have the invocation, we will have the flag salute by Mr. Roberts. If he isn't too busy chewing, if you'll stand with us, please.
Let us pray. O heavenly King, Comforter, Spirit of Truth, who are everywhere present and fill all things, Treasury of blessings and giver of life, we thank you for all the gifts you have graciously bestowed upon us. We are forever thankful for our families and friends, for our homes and schools, and especially for the great city of Temecula, in which we live, work, and play. Further, we ask that you, Lord, will remember our city government, our mayor, city council, and all those in public service. Keep them safe, honorable, and in good health for many years, while they perform the duties of their office with dignity and virtue. Grant them your strength, your wisdom, and understanding, so that their actions in this meeting and at all times will be beneficial to all of us and will be in keeping with your divine plan. Finally, we ask that you allow these men and women to govern in peace and in harmony with each other, so that we too may live calmly and serenely, in piety and in virtue. This we ask in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Father.
Please face the flag and join me in the flag salute. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. And Joshua, tell your mom Susan we said hi. All right, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Comachero?
Here.
Nagar?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Washington?
I'm here.
And Madam Mayor Edwards?
Thank you, sir. We have a stand-in city clerk tonight, so thank you, Michael, for filling in, or Gwen, who's not here this evening. All right, so we have a presentation this evening. We always say that the city of Temecula has more Eagle Scouts than, I think, any city of our size, so I'm gonna ask Mayor Protem Comachero to do the honors this evening. And so, do we have Scott Bostock in the house? Come on down, please.
He's tall.
Yeah, he's from Troop 309. And Mayor Protem Comachero's coming down to give you your certificate of achievement. And I will read it to you. City of Temecula, certificate of achievement. The city council of the city of Temecula commends the outstanding achievement of Scott Bostock of Troop 309. We congratulate Scott for his achievement on receiving the rank of Eagle Scout. We're proud to present Scott with this award, and we wish him success in his future accomplishment. This is a huge achievement, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And here is your very special pin. And Mayor Protem Comachero's gonna tell you about the pin, because I love the pins.
First, there's your certificate.
Thank you very much.
And this is a special pin that we had structured just for Eagle Scouts, so you've gotta find room somewhere.
It's just for Eagle Scouts. Special city Temecula pin, just for Eagle Scouts. And so, tell us, what'd you do for your project?
My project was, my project was a big, like, trail guide header sign at the beginning of a park in a community right next to my house.
So, what's the community right next to your house?
It's North Star in, past Benton. It's on the other, it's like Winchester.
Uh-huh.
And right in that community, they were opening up a new walking trail. So, I put in a trail header where it shows, like, all the distance of the hiking trails and where they are located.
Very nice. So, you had to measure all the distances and sight everything and do all that first, right?
Well, I was provided by the city of Marietta with a sign of, like, the map that they wanted presented.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah.
Excellent. Congratulations, and to your troop as well. So, when you become an Eagle Scout, you're a great asset to your troop, and you're a great asset to your community. So, thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. So, if we have all request-to-speak forms turned into the acting city clerk prior to city council addressing the public comment period, so we need to have everything turned in if you have, if you wanna do a request to speak. So, a total of 30 minutes is provided, so members of the public may address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Okay, do we have any requests to speak?
Yes, we have three speakers tonight.
All right, could we have the first speaker, please?
Jimmy Moore, to be followed by Jeffrey Riley.
Mr. Jimmy Moore, Mr. Temecula.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
And council members and city staff, and what few we have out here in the audience, and the vast TV audience that I hope I'm speaking to tonight, too. I'm representing Cal State San Marcos OLI program, OSHA Lifelong Learning Institute. We have classes starting next week, right here in City Hall. It's down in the Oak, Great Oak Room. And OSHA is designed for people 50 and older, but they don't check ID cards or anything.
Let's me out.
Sorry.
Stop it.
Well, but, you know, you can sneak in, it's okay. And they have classes that have no test, no homework, just go and listen to very, very well-experienced people tell you about things that are fun to learn about. Peg and I both have been taking classes since they've done OSHA here in Temecula for about eight years. Before that, when we were back in Maryland, we went to Johns Hopkins, what they called Evergreen Society then. Now, it's OSHA Lifelong Learning Institute. And we enjoyed 10 years of taking classes there. And the courses that we didn't take when we were in college, because then we were trying to learn something to make a living off of. But these are fun. For example, Monday morning, or Monday afternoon, we start our first class. Brandon Kestment will teach a class on world cinema, no passport required, and be talking about Bergman and Fellini and some of the foreign cinematographers that have made movies. And it should be quite interesting. Then on Fridays, Jack Williams, Dr. Jack Williams, who is the most knowledgeable person I have ever met in my life, he has his doctorate in anthropology and archaeology, and he can give you 30 minutes explanation of any question you ask him about any subject in detail. And he's gonna be teaching two classes. Friday morning, we have dark histories, haunted houses, and paranormal places in the American West. Should be a fun program. He's a great presenter, does good PowerPoint. Then the afternoon, he's gonna be getting class on the modern book of days, the story of our holidays, which will give us in-depth look. And when I say in-depth, I'm talking about going way back of where these holidays started and how they have evolved and everything. All you have to do, if you wanna enroll, is contact Cal State San Marcos and look on their website, just calstatansmarcos/oli, O-L-L-I, OSHA Lifelong Learning Institute, and they'll sign you up. And I hope to see a bunch of people there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jimmy. That sounds like so much fun.
It is.
Do you and Peg go to class together, or do you separate?
Oh, yeah. No, we go together.
Oh, that's so much fun.
Been doing it for years.
Good for you.
She keeps me awake sometimes when it gets a little boring.
Yeah. Good for you.
It's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker, please.
Jeffrey Riley, to be followed by Robert Rosenstein.
Mr. Riley, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you. Jeff Riley is my name. Mr. Riley is what children call me most of the time.
Yeah.
Because I am a school teacher at Isabel Barnett Elementary School. My good friend Zach Schwenk asked me to speak tonight and just say thank you to the council, because I use the Santa Gertrudas Creek Trail to commute to work every day. Well, not every day, but out of 185 school days, I rode 171 times from my house to work.
Wow.
That's a 92% average, which, according to the Temecula School District, is an A.
[laughing]
Not that I'm here to brag, but I just kinda do it naturally. But I do sincerely wanna thank you. The fact that that ride is 80% protected from any type of traffic, it makes me feel safer. It makes my wife feel safer as well, to support me in my dedication to making this a priority, and also to set a good example for the kids to live healthfully, and also think about commuting with biking as well, like we do with the bike train on Thursdays. But I wanna thank you, because that trail, I realize, is a blessing. I feel like it's my responsibility to use it, because, you know, 2.8 miles and I'm at work, 2.8 miles and I'm home. And I wanna encourage the council to consider future projects where, not just bike lanes, which are wonderful, but trails, protected trails like that one, or other ones like Along Diaz, can be added to the landscape of Temecula, because I feel like it's an encouragement to our youth and families to use them. I would like to point out that there is no real safe way to get from the east side of Temecula, where most families live, to the west side, where so many fun things are for families to do. Crossing Overland, Winchester, Santiago, Rancho Cal, those are all kinda sketchy if you have young kids with you. But some type of method to get from the east side to the west side would be, I think, a real blessing to this community, but I don't wanna preach. I sincerely wanna thank you. I'm very, very thankful for that trail, and I'll continue to use it. Hopefully, I can raise my 92% average next year.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for using the trail. And next speaker, please.
Robert Rosenstein.
Mr. Rosenstein, how are you?
I am wonderful, thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, it's a pleasure to come here and hear some positive comments, because unfortunately, a couple times I've been here and they haven't been so positive. I guess I should say my name. It's Robert Rosenstein. I'm an attorney, right next door. I'm also here as the chamber representative. And what I wanted to do on behalf of the chamber is also thank the city and the council for everything it does. And from a business standpoint, to see the growth here in the community has been great. I've spoke to many of you individually, and I've told you that for about three years, our law firm was doing nothing but chapter elevens, and I hated them. But that was all the work there was. I will tell you, we have one chapter 11 left. I will tell you that the entire county of Riverside and San Bernardino together have only 60 reorganization chapter elevens in all of the county, the Riverside bankruptcy court. We are seeing about 30 businesses a month come through. People are interested, starting or asking questions, but, and I think a great deal to deal with is the Entrepreneur Center. I have to tell you that I probably send 10 people over there a month, and also over to the SBDC. What you guys are doing with that is absolutely wonderful, and I have to tell you, as a businessperson in this community that's been here well over 20 years, this change has been wonderful. And on behalf of the chamber, and on behalf of myself, I just wanted to say thank you as well.
Aw, thank you, Robert. It's great to get feedback on the, on TV, too, like that, too. So, thank you. Okay, then, we're gonna move on to the consent calendar. I guess we better take city council reports, huh? Let me get my screen up here. Mr. Washington, you are in the queue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be brief. Jimmy, thank you for coming. Mr. Riley, thank you for supporting what we're doing, and there's more to come. Mr. Rosenstein, thank you. You've been a longtime businessman right here in Old Town. You were at the beginning, when things really got started. We've come a long way, haven't we? Last Friday was the 70th anniversary of D-Day. And I don't know if everyone was so tuned in. Kathy and I like to watch the evening news, and there were just so many fascinating stories. The one that got my attention the most, on Monday, on one of the national news networks, they did a story about a man who had paratrooped, parachuted, paratrooped into northern France a couple days before D-Day. And he characterized it as a slaughterhouse. The soldiers were getting shot, killed in the air. He talked about, and they actually had some video, he talked about how they were so anxious to get off the airplane, because so many of the airplanes were getting shot down before they could get off. And he felt, the reporter asked him if he was nervous or scared, he said, "No, I found it fascinating." He went back last week, at the age of 93, and jumped again into that same location. If anyone doesn't appreciate what that generation did for us, and for freedom here and abroad, then you haven't been paying attention.
Yeah.
And I think a lot of those stories are still available to be seen. If you get on one of the news networks and look for those stories, absolutely awe-inspiring. So, I appreciated it.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Mayor Protem Comachero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chuck, you talked about the 70th anniversary. We're going to experience a 10th anniversary here in Temecula in the next week or so. The Penny Pickles, the Children's Museum, it's just unfathomable to me that it's been 10 years since that facility has opened. But there's going to be a week-long festivities, and one of the bright spots, they're all bright spots, but one of them in particular is, there'll be a science show that'll be as wacky and crazy as everything else that has to do with that facility on the 25th of this month. Am I taking your thunder away, Kevin?
You said wacky.
Okay. Oh, I said wacky, and that's a... Anyway, it's on the 25th of this month. There'll be three shows at 10, 12, and 2. Seating is somewhat limited, so it's gonna be a great event, and the kids are just really gonna enjoy it. So, now that the kids are out of school, it's a great way to keep them occupied for a morning, so be on the lookout for that.
Okay, thank you. So, your button isn't working. Does anybody else punch in that I can't see? No? Nobody? All right. So, then we're gonna move on to the consent calendar. Do I have any public comments for consent? No? No public comments? All right.
No.
So, then, moving on to consent. Let's see. Let me get my notes straightened out here. All right. All matters listed in our consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number one, standard ordinance and resolution adoption procedure. Number two, action minutes. Number three, list of demands. Number four, city treasurer's report as of April 30, 2014. Number five, resolution amending city council election resolutions 14-24 and 14-25. Number six, voter-approved Measure C, annual special tax levy. Number seven, amend the City of Temecula's citywide user fees resolution number 05-101, temporarily suspending the automatic annual adjustment of user fees until the EnerGov permitting system project is completed during fiscal year 2014-15. Number eight, authorization to examine sales, use, and transactions tax records. Number nine, agreement for building plan review services for fiscal year 2014-15. Number 10, agreement for landscape plan check and inspection services for fiscal year 2014-15. Number 11, acceptance of grant deed for transfer of ownership of the Children's Museum property APN 922-036-042, from the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, to the City of Temecula Pursuit, to the approved amended long-range property management plan. Number 12, third amendment to the agreement with Interwest Consulting Group for the provision of building inspector services. Number 13, first amendment to the agreement with Kaiser Marshton Associates, Inc., for real estate economic consulting services. Number 14, fiscal year 2014-15 solid waste and recycling rates. Number 15, approval of the plans and specifications and authorization to solicit construction bids for the citywide slurry seal fiscal year 2014-15, PW 14-06. Number 16, agreement with the ThyssenKrupp Elevator Corporation for fiscal year 2014-15 for elevator services. Number 17, amendments to annual agreements for various services required by the Public Works Department Traffic Division fiscal year 2014-15. Number 18, opposition of AB 2153-Grey and Act to amend Section 89708 of the Education Code relating to the post-secondary education at the request of Councilmember Washington. So, and I think I've got an abstention.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm gonna abstain from item two, the minutes, as I was not present at the last meeting.
I'll move approval of consent calendar.
Okay, I move approval and a second, noting an abstention on the minutes for Mayor Protem Comachero, so we cast our votes, please.
Keeps popping back.
Yeah.
Got it? So, our acting city clerk is running all the buttons and doing IT.
Me? I voted. It's not, doesn't show up on my screen anymore to vote, so...
He's getting a withdraw vote.
A withdraw vote?
So, it's showing...
We should do a voice vote.
We can do a voice vote if we want.
Don't withdraw.
So, okay. There we go. It was Councilmember Roberts.
It was not.
So, we are showing four yes.
No, five.
And, well, no, on my screen, I've got four yes and one abstain. So, we're gonna, we can show that.
Yeah, or just for the record, my abstention is only on item two.
Okay, so, we're gonna show five, let's, five yes, recording one abstention on item number two for Mayor Protem Comachero. All right? Okay, so... But you're doing fine, Mr. Stand-In City Clerk. Other than that, yeah. All right, then, I'm going to recess this session of the Temecula City Council to the Temecula Community Services District meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order. We won't subject you to the roll again, Mike. We are all here. Please reflect that in the record. Do we have any public comment under this portion?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, thank you. We do have three items under consent calendar tonight. Item 19, approval of the action minutes of May 27, 2014. Item 20, fourth amendment to the agreement with Excel Landscape, Inc., for landscape maintenance services for fiscal year 2014-15. And item 21, annual agreements for services for various community services district citywide events, classes, programs for fiscal year 2014-15.
Move approval of consent calendar.
Take it.
We have a motion and a second. Again, for the record, I'll be abstaining on the minutes, item 19. Please cast your vote. We don't have it up, the vote up on our screen yet.
He does it.
There it goes.
Oh, that's interesting. I don't think anybody voted.
Yeah, we did.
Oh, it never came up on my screen to vote.
Is he logged in?
Yeah, I don't know. Something's going on. Let's just take a voice vote to be sure all is in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'm registering an abstention on item 19.
Yeah, you know why? It's showing you as absent every time.
Oh, I'm here. That's why I couldn't...
Yeah. You're not...
To speak either.
Sorry.
It's all right. It's nice to have a city clerk who's also your IT chief.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll assume I'm, that I'm here now.
Let the record reflect that Mayor Protem Comachero is now here.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, anyway, again, we lost it a little bit in the shuffle, but that vote was 5-0 with my abstention on item 19. We do have two public hearing items this evening. Any person may submit written comments to the Community Services District before a public hearing, or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing, or in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. First one is item 22, Temecula Community Services District proposed rates and charges for fiscal year 2014-15. Can we have a staff report, please? Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Honorable Board, fellow staff. My name's David Bilby, and I'm here to present the 2014-2015 adoption of rates and charges for the Temecula Community Services District, Rates and Charges. We have four service levels within the city. Service Level B is for residential streetlights. Service Level C has a variety of zones for perimeter landscaping and slope maintenance. Service Level D is recycling refuse and green waste collection. And Service Level R is emergency road maintenance. You can see that Service Level B is expected to stay the same as last year at $25.68 per residential unit, no annual increase. Service Level C, we have two zones that adopted an inflator several years back. That inflation rate was approximately 1%, so you'll see Zone 6 and Zone 29 did increase by 1% from fiscal year 2013-2014. All other zones will remain the same for fiscal year 14-15. Service Level D is for the refuse and recycling charges. You do see a slight increase, a little over 2%. This is related to an increase in the CPI inflator, the landfill tipping fees, as well as general administrative costs within the city to administer the service level. Service Level R will remain the same, at $115.26 for improved parcels and $57.62 for unimproved parcels. And with that, that ends my presentation, and we have a consultant here from Web and Associates to answer any questions, in addition to staff.
Thank you, David. Any questions of staff at this point?
I do. Just to clarify, these are not arbitrary increases, and the city does not derive any profit from any of these. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, these are just passed through, whatever it costs the city, that's what the rates reflect?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments for David? Thank you, David. Seeing none, we will then open the public hearing. Seeing none, we will then open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
No, sir, we do not.
Makes it fairly easy. Then we will close the public hearing and entertain any council discussion.
I'll move approval of the resolution adopting proposed rates and charges for fiscal year 2014-15.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And seeing none, please cast your votes. And I voted this time, so, thank you, Michael.
You're here.
That motion does carry five-zero. Item twenty-three is also a public hearing. The item is adoption of fiscal year 2014-15 TCSD Annual Operating Budget. Aaron, are you gonna do that?
Yeah. Good evening, President Comachero, Directors of the Community Services District Board. The City Council and city staff met on Wednesday, May 21st, for a budget workshop to discuss the draft capital improvement program, the draft annual operating budget, the draft community services and SARDA budgets, a five-year strategic plan, and several proposed budget policies. Direction received from the workshop has been incorporated into our respective presentations this evening. Before we launch into the budget workshop slides, I wanted to share some current demographic information for the city, and of course, these numbers do play a significant role in our local economy and local budget. Recently published from Nielsen Reports, as well as the Southwest Riverside County Board of Realty, the following profile has been created. Temecula's current population is just over 106,000. This is a 1.3 percent increase over last year. The median age is listed at 34. Number of households, 33,535. And the average household income is just under $81,000 a year. In March of 2014, the median existing home sales price was listed at $427,000. And in 2013, the number of jobs listed in the City of Temecula was just shy of 43,000. And a trend that has been encouraging and moving in the right direction has been our unemployment figures. In April, Temecula's unemployment rate was listed at 5.6 percent, compared with Riverside County, which was listed at 8.3 percent. State of California was at 7.3, and the nation was listed at 5.9. The proposed fiscal year 1415 operating budgets and CIP has been drafted to be in line with the six core values of the City Council adopted Quality of Life Master Plan from 2011. I believe a fitting theme to our investments and priorities, as we celebrate 25 years as a city, remains building greatness, maintaining excellence. This slide is significant in that it details a timeline the residents created about the community they wanted to see and be built by the year 2030. As you can see, several of these desires have been accomplished, while some are in various stages of planning and discussion. Nevertheless, we wanted to share the City Council's direction and vision, and some accomplishment put into context. And with that, I will begin with the Community Services District Proposed Annual Operating Budget for 2014-15. The projected revenue is estimated at $18.7 million, and the major funding sources include $9.2 million that will arrive from TCSD rates and charges, $1.8 million, which represents the TCSD portions of the city's special tax, and the other half of that goes to park maintenance, which will, is included in the general fund. $5 million is reserved for the Temecula Community Services District, formerly referred to as REST, or Revenue Excess Sharing in Temecula. And $2.5 million is made up of a combination of recreation fees and contract class user fees and other revenue sources. Again, total projected revenue is estimated at $18.7 million. On the expenditure side, proposed expenditures are listed at $19.3 million. Main categories include $8.3 million for park and recreation, $6.8 million for refuse hauling, $2.1 million for slope maintenance, $1 million for residential street lighting, $868,000 for the Temecula Public Library, $239,000 is the O&amp;M cost associated with the Harvest in Lake Park, and $9,600 for dirt road maintenance services primarily. This is earmarked for Leifer Road. The shortfall between revenues and expenditures within the TCSD is not uncommon, and this difference is being made up with fund balances from various service levels for one-time expenditures. Based on the conversation we had at the budget workshop about facility program subsidies, internally, we have discussed spending time creating pro forma financial plans for each of our facilities, with the goal of not just reducing subsidies where possible, but actually bringing several into the black, whether it be analyzing fees, costs, marketing, and leveraging additional resources. It is staff's hope that over the next five years, this transition will become more obvious without affecting the popularity of programming or reducing service levels. Regarding the city's special tax, when Measure C was passed in 1997, the voters established the special tax rate at $74.44 per home per year, which we are proposing to charge again this fiscal year. Our residents, however, receive an excellent level of service because of the city's general fund contribution towards park and recreation services. In fact, if our park and recreation program was totally funded solely through the special tax, it would only cost our residents $158 per year. Our residents have a cost savings of $83.74 per home per year. As I outlined before, the general fund will contribute $5 million as part of the Temecula Community Service District funding in fiscal year 1415. Some park and recreation highlights include the reopening of the Temecula Community Center on Pujo for one full year. This is the city's oldest community center that's been recently rehabbed. A full year of offerings and programs at the Jefferson Recreation Center, or the JRC. Human services, special events including college tours and special needs workshops, including the continuation of the viticulture program as a public-private nonprofit partnership. Cultural arts special events that include movies in the park, the summer concert series, street painting, and much more. Old Town special events that include Western Days, Bluegrass Festival Rod Run, and signature special events such as the Fourth of July Parade, Fireworks Show, Santa's Electric Light Parade, and many, many more. We're also bringing back Temecula on Ice, which is a seasonal ice rink, for three weeks out in front of City Hall. And in addition, we have numerous recreation activities, sports, and active adult and senior programming. One outstanding item from the budget workshop included a discussion to explore and evaluate our non-resident fees for programs and classes. And if amenable to the City Council, we can do so and prepare a recommendation in advance of the next advertising of our rec brochure for fall 2014, or summer of '15. It is likely changes to such fees will require council resolution, and we can work with TCSD President Comachero between now and then. And with that, this concludes my presentation on the draft operating budget for TCSD fiscal year 1415, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Let's start with questions first. Does council have any questions of Mr. Adams? Seeing none, do we have any public speakers?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, then, well, let me open the public hearing and then ask the question. We don't have any public speakers.
No.
Okay, then we will close the public hearing, and now we're open for discussion. Anybody?
In light of the very elaborate and in-depth discussion that was held at our workshop, I'd like to move that we adopt the proposed TCSD Annual Operating Budget.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Before we vote, I just want to make sure everybody understands that this is a very important document. Obviously, it's a document that guides us through the next 12 months from a financial perspective, and I don't want anybody to think that we take it lightly, because there's not a lot of discussion, and we're just gonna go ahead and vote on it. This gets an awful lot of work, it's a year-long process for staff. All the council members are briefed, we have copies of the proposed budget well in advance, and of course, we had a very extensive budget workshop, at which we discussed and sometimes actually changed some of those items, so.
In public.
In, in public, so. So, it gets beaten to death, and by the time it gets to this, this point tonight, it's a pretty complete document, and I think what you're seeing is that, well, I don't want to presuppose the vote, but it seems like there's a comfort level with it. So, with that, please cast your vote. And that motion does carry unanimously, and Mr. Adams, a theme you'll hear, I'm sure, with the other budgets that we'll be considering tonight, we all know the effort that goes in, and it's the great budgets that have been brought forward in a year that's a little bit different than some of the years we've had before, and we'll discuss that a little bit more, I think, later, so. Anyway, that concludes the public hearing. Items, a director's report tonight. Kevin?
Just a quick one, Mr. President. If we have the slide up, it's that time of year again, and now that school is out, we can see in the audience. It's fun times here in Temecula. So, check out the Summer/Fall Activity Guide for a listing of our family events, summer enrichment camps, and a variety of classes and programs. And like you mentioned earlier, the 10th anniversary of Penny Pickles on June 25th, and all the wacky fun and surprises, Tom, from June 20th through the 29th. As well as this week, on Thursday, June 12th, listen to the sounds of Belladonna, Tribute to Fleetwood Mac, at the Temecula Amphitheater, beginning at 7:00 PM. And on Friday, yes, Friday, June 13th, we're hosting the season's first movie in the park. The featured movie is Monster University at Temecula Hills Park, with activities beginning at 7:00 PM, and a movie starting at dusk. We encourage all of our residents to take advantage of everything we have to offer here in community services, so come out, have some fun this summer. And that concludes our report.
Thank you, Kevin. Mr. Adams, a.
Nothing further, Mr. President.
Nothing? Any reports from any of the board members? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion adjournment.
Adjournment.
We have a motion and a second. Any objection?
Uh-uh.
We are adjourned.
All right, so, I am going to call the, to order the meeting of the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency. Let the record reflect that all the directors are present. Do we have any public comments on this one?
No, we do not.
All right, then I'll move on down to the consent calendar. All matters listed in a consent are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency or request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number 24, action minutes. Number 25, approval of the grant deed for transfer of ownership of the children's museum property APN 922-036-042 from the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency to the City of Temecula Pursuit to the approved amended long-range property management plan.
Move approval of the consent calendar.
Okay, I have a motion to approve, and I need a second.
I'll second, but I am abstaining from item 24.
All right, and so, we show an abstention for Mayor Protem Comachero from 24. Cast your votes, please. And that is five, and an abstention as noted. All right? Okay, moving on to SARDA business. Number 26, adoption of the fiscal years 2015-2019 Capital Improvement Program budget for the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency.
Yes, Chairperson Edwards and Directors. With respect to the successor agency to the redevelopment agency for the CIP, there's a CIP placeholder project, and I think we have a slide.
You look nice, Aaron.
We do have a slide.
[laughing].
There it is, and it's only one. This is a CIP placeholder project that includes 5.3 million of affordable housing funds. It is important to note that these are 2010 bond proceeds available to the city as a result of the State Department of Finance confirming the city's successful wind down of its RDA. We have yet to identify an affordable housing project to program these funds, but have had several interested parties, and this concludes my presentation with respect to the SARDA/CIP budget.
All right, any questions of staff? Anyone? No?
Move approval.
Okay, I have a motion to approve and a second. Cast your votes, please. And item 26 passes five-zero. Okay, moving on to item 27, adoption of the fiscal year 2014-15 SARDA Annual Operating Budget.
Yes, we have one other slide that could be brought up. Chairperson Edwards and Directors, the debt service payments for the former RDA bonds equates to 6.6 million, as well as the Department of Finance approved enforceable obligations of 1.2 million. These obligations include the Abbott Owner Participation Agreement, the Abbott Development Disposition Agreement, and affordable housing obligations. And finally, it's just important to note that all 7.8 million referenced here is tax increment provided by Riverside County for such obligations, and that concludes my presentation with respect to SARDA operating budget.
Okay, any questions? And could, I have one point of clarification for you. Aaron, could you please repeat that last part? Where does the money come from to pay for this?
This is a tax increment that previously, under the RDA law, came to the City of Temecula, but in this case, it will come from, it'll pay the debt service, and it'll come from Riverside County.
So, it doesn't come from the city?
No.
It comes from the county?
Just to clarify that, so then, am I correct? We used to get all the tax increment when there was redevelopment? When redevelopment sunsetted, now we only get enough to cover what was the pre-existing debt service, correct?
That's correct, the obligations.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, we have no questions and no further discussion, so I need a motion on 27.
So, move?
Second.
Motion and a second. And let's cast our votes, thank you. And so, number 27 passes unanimously. And do I have any reports under SARDA? Nothing? Directors, nothing?
Nothing, Mr. President.
Nope. All right, then I need a motion to adjourn.
Move adjournment.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Known, so, SARDA is opposed. All right, and I will now reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting and move into public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the City Council before a public hearing, or may appear and be heard in support of, or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing, or written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. Onto City Council business. Number 28, adoption of fiscal years 2015-2019 Capital Improvement Program budget.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The proposed capital improvement program fiscal year 15 through 19, this is a comprehensive planning document that will identify and prioritize major capital improvement projects over the next five years. A majority of the proposed capital projects are funded with one-time revenue sources that are not reoccurring. It is extremely important that the appropriate level of effort is expended to maximize the efficiency and effectiveness of these one-time dollars. There are a total of 49 projects proposed in the CIP that include traffic circulation, public facilities, park projects, and a placeholder for available housing funds administered by SARDA or the successor agency to the former RDA. As depicted on the chart, 87 percent of the project costs are identified for circulation improvements, representing over $285 million. There are 22 infrastructure projects identified, and nine park and recreation projects. There is approximately $451.9 million in project costs located within the capital improvement program. However, $326 million represents the cost remaining to complete such projects, and $125 million has been previously spent on the listed projects in this document. But as you can see, we have identified $221 million in funded capital improvement projects for the term of the five-year CIP, of which, $12.3 million has been newly appropriated in fiscal year 1415, combined with $48.3 million, which will be carried over from prior years. So, in sum, this represents an investment of over $60 million in the coming year. Some of the major traffic circulation improvement projects include French Valley Parkway Interchange Phase Two. This project is about 70 percent complete on design. The total project costs are $170 million. We have identified approximately 1/3rd of the costs needed, and will remain diligent on securing the balance. We are also in talks with Caltrans about phasing strategies that can be considered by the city to evaluate in the future delivery of this important regional project. I-15, 79 South Interchange is 95 percent complete on design. Construction funding has been secured with regional dollars, and now represents a $46 million fully funded infrastructure project. We hope to be out to bid on this project later in the coming fiscal year, with the expected timeframe for construction about 18 months. Marietta Creek Bridge and Overland Drive Extension, all of the right-of-way, has been secured for this project, and staff is pursuing a Highway Bridge Program federal grant for the bridge component, which represents the last piece to this capital project. Other notable projects include citywide pavement rehabilitation program, which includes about $1.1 million in new Measure A funds, which will supplement approximately $5.7 million we are carrying over from last year, as we continue to commit to this investment in our roads. And traffic signal equipment replacement program, this is ongoing year to year. Infrastructure projects include a total of 22, with over $28 million in investment. Notable projects include citywide sidewalks, bike lane and trail program, city facility rehab, library parking phase two, which includes the addition of a parking lot northwest of the existing lot to accommodate one of our heaviest traffic facilities. Paba Road sidewalks, as we are in receipt of a state grant and prepared to match money for construction of this improvement. And citywide surveillance cameras proposed as a multi-year phase program to augment existing cameras and install in appropriate sports parks and city facilities. existing cameras and install in appropriate sports parks and city facilities. Other projects include Temecula Park and Ride on La Paz, the theater remediation, which is primarily funded through settlement dollars, the former YMCA repair and remediation, an evaluation of disabled access to city facility plan, and design is near-complete of the living quarters for Fire Station 73. As was directed at the budget workshop, we will be advancing funds from our secondary reserves in the amount of $817,000, which will allow this capital project to commence in fiscal year 1415. Future payback through fire development impact fees and/or development conditions on future development agreements are planned and will be expected to occur. Park and Recreation Projects, their total of nine, with over $7 million worth of investment. Notable projects include Penny Pickles Workshop Exhibit and Enhancement Project, Park Improvement Programs citywide, and Playground Equipment and Safety Enhancements citywide. Sam Hicks Monument Park Playground Replacement, and this project will be largely funded through community development block grant dollars, a senior citizen outdoor fitness lot at Margarita Community Park, and the Special Needs Playground at Margarita Community Park. And this project broke ground on June 5th and is expected to be completed before the end of the calendar year. The draft capital improvement program budget has been presented to the Planning Commission, the Public Traffic Safety Commission, and the Community Services Commission. And at this time, we are available to answer any questions that the council may have with respect to the proposed CIP.
Madam Mayor.
Sir?
Just one item for the record, as we have in years past, Mayor Edwards will not participate in any discussion and abstain on the items related to Marietta Creek due to the proximity of our employer to the project, and Councilmember Nigar will not participate or will abstain on the ornamental pedestrian barriers project on Deer Hollow adjacent to Great Oak High School because of the proximity to his property. Under the FPPC rules, you do not need to leave the dais and the council chamber unless the council elects to discuss either one of those projects.
All right. So does anyone have any questions of staff on any of these items? I don't see anyone in the queue. No? No discussion? No, so we need to open the public hearing. Peter, protocol, do we open the public hearing individually on each one, or can we open at the beginning?
It's not a public hearing, so you just ask if there's any people who wish to speak.
Okay, so just each item?
And then if somebody wants to speak on those, then you can make a decision as to how to handle it at that time.
Okay, so do we have any requests to speak on anything?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so no requests to speak, and so any discussion on item twenty-eight, none?
Move approval of the capital improvement plan.
Okay, so a motion and a second on item twenty-eight. Cast your votes. And we have unanimous on number twenty-eight, thank you. All right, moving on to number twenty-nine, adoption of the fiscal year 2014-15 Annual Operating Budget.
And Madam Mayor, I'm going to introduce our Finance Director, Jennifer Hennessy, for a presentation this evening.
And Jennifer Hennessy.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. We have a slideshow. There we go. The General Fund, which serves as the primary operating fund for the city, is structurally balanced with revenues exceeding expenditures. The fiscal year 1415 budget is projected to be relatively flat compared to 1314, with a 2% growth rate in both revenues and expenditures. Revenue is projected just to be just under 62 million, and expenditures are appropriated at 61.6 million. Transfers to other funds are budgeted at 1.9 million, with the majority going towards capital projects, including the park and city facility maintenance, theater remediation, matching grants for the completion of the Paba Road sidewalks, and the commencement of a disabled access plan for city facilities. As a result of council direction, at the May 21st workshop, general fund dollars will be advanced for the construction of the Fire Station number 73 Living Quarters upgrade. These funds will be reimbursed over time from development impact fees collected to mitigate impacts on the Fire Department. Additionally, funds are being transferred to the Affordable Housing Fund and the Business Incubator Fund to offset the revenue gap occurring in these two funds. The General Fund is projected to end the year with $22.6 million in fund balance. Reserves are fully funded, with a 20% reserve for economic uncertainty funded at $12.3 million. 4.5 million have been earmarked for capital projects programmed to occur in the next fiscal year, and the total available or unreserved fund balance is projected to be $5.5 million. General Fund revenue is projected at 61.9 million for 1415, and sales tax, which makes up nearly half of the General Fund, is 47% of total revenue. Other revenues, which include reimbursements from the CIP for administration costs, make up 14%, and intergovernmental revenues, which is predominantly property tax in lieu of vehicle license fees, generates 11% of total revenue, and property tax contributes an additional 10%. In developing the revenue projections as part of the budget process, staff analyzes economic trends and adjusts for local anomalies, such as new businesses or developments projected to occur during the year. In addition, we receive projections from the city's consultants for property tax and sales tax to aid in our analysis. For fiscal year 1415, several key revenue sources are showing definite signs of recovery and are projected to grow at a modest rate in the coming year. Property tax is expected to increase 4.2% over the prior year due to a combination of increased home values, new home inventories, and the recapture of property tax from homes that received value reductions during the recession. The city's largest revenue source, or sales tax, is projected to grow at a modest 2.7%, while many sectors are exceeding this growth rate, such as auto sales, building and construction, and general consumer goods. Corporate challenges in a major company are causing us to be more conservative in our projections overall. Intergovernmental revenues reflects property taxes in lieu of vehicle license fees, which increases along with the city's overall assessed valuation, and is projected to grow at a rate of 3.5% next year. And the other revenues category shows a 2.9% decline due to the end of a two-year reimbursement from the county for property tax administration fees paid in prior years. Overall, the trend in revenues is positive and continued growth is expected. As illustrated in the pie chart, nearly 50% of the General Fund resources are dedicated to public safety, with police allocated 39% of the total and fire allocated 8% net of the fire tax credit. And animal control is allocated just under 1% of total expenditures. Public Works makes up 20% of the total, with a budget of $12.4 million. However, a portion of this budget is fully reimbursed from eligible capital projects and is reflected as General Fund revenue. The city's administrative departments total 12% of the General Fund operating budget, and community development receives 7% with a budget of $4.5 million. The contribution to TCSD of 5 million makes up 8% of total expenditures, and the $2.1 million annual debt service for the Civic Center is roughly 3% of the total. And economic development and community support combined make up 2% of the total General Fund expenditures. The Police Department budget is projected at $23.8 million, which is an increase of 3.1% over the prior year. The Police Department is currently staffed with 100 sworn officers, 19 community service officers, and 15 administrative personnel. As the city contracts with Riverside County Sheriff's Office to provide police services, we are subject to the rate increases negotiated by the county. The contractual rate increase for next year is projected at 6%. However, staff recommends maintaining the existing three vacancies into next fiscal year to generate $832,000 in savings to help offset the increased contractual costs. Finally, the cost-sharing arrangement for school resource officers negotiated last year will continue with the city and school district sharing costs 50/50 to fund the five SRO The Fire Department budget is projected at $12.1 million, which is offset by the $6.9 million fire tax credit, which is collected by the county from citizens' property tax payments. The net impact to the city is 5.1 million, which is a 2.1% increase over the prior year. The department currently has 65 employees, with 56 station staff covering the four fire stations, three command staff, two county prevention staff, three administrative staff, and one city inspector. This coming year, the fire contract is projected to increase by 5.6%, which will be offset by holding the chief position vacant for six months, while an evaluation of the department's command structure will be conducted. This vacancy will create an estimated savings of $138,000. The Community Support Grant Program is budgeted at $76,000, and this program is being augmented by the net proceeds received from the rod run event occurring earlier this year. And to help maintain the award-winning programs and services offered by the Community Service District, the General Fund contributes annually to this district. The contribution in prior years was termed Revenue Access Sharing in Temecula, or REST, and in fiscal year 1415, the contribution is projected to be just over $5 million, of which 4 million will go towards recreation activities, $650,000 towards the library, and another $370,000 to cover the funding gap in residential streetlights. As part of the budget process this year, each department was provided an operating budget target equal to fiscal year 1314. Any requests that exceeded this target were presented to the city manager, discussed amongst the executive team, and prioritized accordingly. The following items, which are mostly one-time projects or studies, have been included in the proposed budget. $60,000 has been allocated to the IT Department for the update of the city's website. Staff is recommending we conduct a fee study to evaluate our fee structure and ensure that fees are appropriately covering the cost of city service. As part of this fee study, a cost allocation plan is also being recommended for funding, and the approximate cost for both studies is roughly $75,000. A market assessment study conducted by Kaiser Marston Associates nearly 15 years ago regarding Old Town is requested to be updated, as well as broadened, to include infill projects throughout the city. This will assist in making financially balanced land use decisions as we approach build-out. The study will cost in the range of $100,000 and is reflected in the Planning Department budget. The HR Department requested $11,000 for Classification and Organizational Efficiency Study, which is the next step in the comprehensive review of the city's job classifications. In analyzing the city's fleet of vehicles and major equipment, three vehicles were identified as having high mileage and high maintenance cost and are requested to be replaced in fiscal year 1415 at a total cost of $82,500. Temecula's share of the 2014 election costs are expected to be $119,000, which is higher than in previous years because the state is no longer reimbursing the county for this process, and this $119,000 budget is reflected in the city clerk's budget. Finally, as new homes continue to be built in Aurora Paw Ranch area, it's anticipated that Skyview Park will open this next fiscal year. The park's maintenance budget reflects an addition of $25,000 for maintenance for this new facility for half of the fiscal year. Budget reflects staffing levels consistent with the prior year. No new full-time benefited positions are being added, and any project staffing costs over the current year are being offset by operational savings. All costs associated with the recently negotiated MOU have been reflected, as well as the increased CalPERS contribution rate for fiscal year 1415. Together, these costs total $200,000. And finally, the Intern Fellowship Program, which affords intern opportunities to local high school and college students, is funded with a $12,000 contribution from the General Fund. This program also reflects the new partnership with local private businesses, who are encouraged to just add one new hire for the summer. As part of the annual budget process, staff looks out five years and forecasts revenues and expenditures based on a combination of economic trends, known contractual increases, and development projects on the horizon. Long-range planning not only helps provide a future outlook to the city's fiscal position, it also helps policymakers see the long-term impacts of decisions made in the current fiscal year. Analyzing past trends and fiscal decisions is also helpful in forecasting the future. And in doing so, we see that between 2001 and 2007, Temecula saw a 76% increase in revenue. Expenditures rose at a slower pace, creating an operating surplus, which was deposited into the General Fund balance each year. By 2009, the General Fund had accumulated $49.2 million in fund balance, exceeding the reserve level, which is shown here as the blue line on the chart, exceeded the reserve level by over $38 million. This accumulation of resources was both strategic and fiscally prudent, as the city had the long-term vision of building this iconic civic center. And with the construction of the Civic Center, the city began to invest its resources strategically and spend down its secondary reserve. By 2009, the city had experienced a near 30% drop in revenue over the three prior years. However, operating expenditures were held within operating revenues in all but one year. Reducing expenditures commensurate with revenue, rather than relying on reserves to balance the General Fund, illustrated the city's strong fiscal management and set this city apart from others during...set this city apart from most during the Great Recession. Since 2009, the city has invested $21.6 million of its secondary reserves in pavement management, capital infrastructure, storm drain projects, as well as improvements in Old Town, and the city was able to take advantage of the lower construction prices due to the recession and save $10 million in construction costs for the Civic Center project. As the city celebrates its 25-year anniversary, it is also transitioning into a new phase. No longer in its growth phase, the city is merging into a maintenance city, and as such, will need to focus on the preservation and restoration of the wonderful amenities that have been built over the past two and a half decades. Resources will need to be made available to maintain and replace city assets as they were. Roads typically last 15 to 20 years, so investments in pavement management will be ongoing. The city started the renovation of its facilities this year with the remodel of the TCC, and as time goes by, monies will need to be available to address the various needs at the remaining facilities. Technology is another asset that will need to be maintained and managed on an ongoing basis. This long-term focus on asset management will require strategic planning that is integrated with the annual budget process. And finally, the city will also need to focus on maintaining fiscally sustainable programs and services in order to minimize ongoing subsidies. Over the next five years, if the city's service levels stay status quo, expenditures are expected to exceed revenues in year five, indicating the threat of a structural imbalance within the General Fund. The advantage of long-range planning is to alert council early enough to course-correct and to avoid reactive decision-making. We are fortunate to have the benefit of time in order to change our course. Over the next five years, the primary challenges facing the city's budget will be to identify a continuing funding source for pavement management needs. As mentioned previously, the secondary reserve is a finite source of funds and is not sufficient to provide ongoing investment in the city's road network. Adequate cost recovery will be critical to preserving the General Fund over time. The growing subsidies provided to those programs that are not self-sustaining will negatively impact the General Fund's ability to fund other services. And the city has created outstanding amenities and programs for the citizens to enjoy. Maintaining this high quality of life is vital for Temecula, but will be fiscally challenging as the cost of services increase over time. Also, as part of the budget process, we reviewed the existing budget policies and have made recommendations on modifying a few and adding a few new policies. The first modification is to the Reserve for Economic Uncertainty. Current policy language establishes this reserve at 20% of operating expenditures within the General Fund. The proposed language adds a list of eligible uses for these reserve funds. The eligible uses listed are usually isolated events and could have significant impacts on the city's budget. Local disasters or acts of nature, the loss of a major revenue source due to a financial hardship or other economic downturn, state-imposed revenue reduction or mandated payment, significant unanticipated expenditures, or substantial payout in the city's comprehensive annual leave. In previous years, a separate reserve was held for the comprehensive annual leave payouts, however, it's recommended to combine this reserve with the Reserve for Economic Uncertainty. As shown in earlier slides, the available General Fund balance is currently $5.5 million, and this has been referred to as our secondary reserve. And staff is proposing to formalize this term in a budget policy, as well as establish a desired minimum for the secondary reserve. The desired level would be equal to 5% of operating budget, operating expenditures, which for 1415 would equal just over $3 million. dollars. This new reserve would act as a cushion between the operating revenues over expenditures and the Reserve for Economic Uncertainty. And eligible uses of these funds would be limited to funds that are necessary to cover an operating deficit at the end of a fiscal year in the event that revenue falls short of covering expenditures, one-time capital investments that could create a long-term savings, such as building a solar array over the new library parking facility, or another use would be to leverage grant funds, as we're proposing to do to complete the Pabba Road sidewalks this fiscal year, and finally, any expenditure that can be deemed to create an economic benefit to the city. Staff is also proposing to add a contingency plan to provide a roadmap to follow in the event of severe fiscal hardship and minimize reactionary decision-making. The plan outlines the order in which reserve funds would be utilized. For one-time events, if the operating budget cannot absorb the financial hit, it would be appropriate to utilize the secondary reserve first, and if there are insufficient resources in the secondary reserve, then utilizing the Economic Uncertainty Reserve would be prudent. For ongoing events, such as the loss of a major revenue source, the city would need to restructure its expenditures to fit within the new reduced revenue base. Depending on the severity of the loss, this restructure could take time to implement the necessary measures. So under this circumstance, the contingency plan would allow for the use of Economic Uncertainty Reserves, but only for a two-year cycle, in order to limit the dependency on this reserve to pay for ongoing operations. And in the event the contingency plan is triggered, council approval would be required so as to inform the policymakers of management's intention to utilize the twenty percent reserves. And as part of the city's asset management efforts, new language is proposed to be added to the existing Vehicle and Equipment Fund policy to establish criteria for utilizing these funds. An eligible asset will have a three or more year useful life and will cost ten thousand dollars or greater. A new replacement fund for technology, equipment, and software is proposed to be added to the budget, and this fund would be used to accumulate resources necessary to replace hardware and software at the end of its useful life. This activity has been accounted for in the Information Technology Internal Service Fund in the past, and this new fund will simply segregate IT operations from asset management. The policy also establishes the criteria for an asset to be eligible for replacement using these funds, which includes an annual lifecycle replacement program or any technology asset that exceeds three thousand dollars and can be utilized for three years or more. And this concludes our presentation, and I wanted to formally thank the department directors, as well as their analysts, and recognize the budget team, which consists of Heidi Schrader, Rudy Graziano, Pascal Brown, Shirley Robinson, and Evelyn Watson.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
This is, this is, again, a huge effort, and council members did have individual input, met individually with city manager's office, so we have been briefed individually, and then again, we had a public budget workshop, so we're going to be taking each one of these individually, but do you have individual comments or discussion?
Madam Mayor.
And Peter.
Just for the record, as we did with the capital improvement plan, Councilmember Washington will not participate in the discussion and will abstain on any of the budget items relating to the Balloon and Wine Festival or the Coman Race for the Cure. The company in which he has an interest, California Tees, has perhaps indirectly provided merchandise for those two groups. I'm not sure it's a conflict, but he will be abstaining. He does not need to leave the room unless the council decides to discuss those items individually.
All right. Any discussion, anyone?
Thanks, Peter.
No?
Discussion or questions?
Questions first.
Yep. Any questions?
No questions.
No questions? And any comments on item twenty-nine? Public comments?
No public speakers.
None? No? All right, so then, we have to take each one of these individually, correct, Peter?
No, I think you can make one motion and adopt all of the resolutions.
Can we? All right.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
With a comment.
Okay. And Jeff has a comment.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. I just, you know, it was interesting, sitting here, listening to a rather lengthy and excellent presentation, and really, it was kind of a retrospective of where we've been and where we are and where we're going, and it struck me that we've said before, over the years here, that governments should run their finances as a family would, and spend what you have and not let yourself get in a hole, and make sure you put something away for a rainy day when you can. And as you looked at, in particular, the one chart you put up about our secondary fund, Reserve Fund and the growth, and then spending it down, what we saw was, in the best of times, two thousand and four, five, six, seven, to a degree, revenues exceeded expenditures by quite a bit, and we built up that reserve to more than thirty million dollars above where the comfort level was, I mean, but it was a very prudent thing to do, because good times don't last forever. And then boom, the economy went off a cliff, and here we were, without any diminishment of services, still being able to fulfill the goals that we had set for the city by spending what we had saved, not all of it, but a good portion of it, and now here we are, coming out of the tunnel again, with revenues stabilizing and even starting to grow again. So my compliments to you, Jennifer, Aaron, all the department heads, all those that came before, this was an effort over many years. It's just good government and good prudent fiscal, responsible way to handle budgets, so I, for one, appreciate it, so thank you.
And I'm going to say what I said during the budget workshops, and that is, we have transitioned from a city of, you know, a newborn baby into our teenage years, and now into a city of where we get to live and enjoy what we have built. And part of that is being fiscally responsible so that we can maintain those things that we have built, so that we can enjoy them, and that's where we are now, so we're planning ahead, putting that money away so that we can maintain those things, our roads and our facilities. So that's what this budget reflects, it's looking out ahead and putting money away so that we can maintain them and take care of those things. So if you will go ahead and everybody cast your votes.
Did have a comment.
Okay, Mr. Nigaro.
Yeah. First of all, very good, very good budget, very good budget presentation, I know the effort that went into it, and quite a bit of work. It's a very interesting dynamic, and Mr. Comatero, I love the way you kind of portrayed it, because it is kind of rather retrospective, you know, we were all there during those good times, and, and, yeah, we socked it away, and we built this facility for, I believe, almost half cash, and that was kind of a, or more, using cash, because we were prudent in putting those funds away. But it's an interesting dynamic, because there's some things that are occurring that we don't control, okay? First of all, whenever we're seeing a budget where we have revenues exceeding expenditures, that's a good thing, and that's where you want to be, so that's kind of cool. Some things that draw concern is that we don't control a lot of the costs for public safety. So as we're seeing the costs for sheriffs go up, or the costs for firefighters go up, but our revenues don't go up or they stay flat, that creates a dilemma for us, I mean, just like it would at anybody's household, and we have to deal with it. We've been given a warning that if the trend continues, we need to take care of this within the next five years to make sure either find revenue sources or start to cut back on some things that bring those things in balance. And so we need to start doing that now. I'm not certain what that means, per se. It means a lot of things. I don't know that we discuss all the things that it means today, it means looking for all the little nooks and crannies where we can begin to save money, and I don't care how small they are, whether it's, you know, going from, you know, using a more efficient light bulb to, to cutting a program that four people attend that's costing us thirty thousand a year. I mean, we, we need to begin to look at all of those things, so, and see where we're getting bang for the buck, or it's combining programs, all of those things, so that what our citizens, I think, expect is that everything just stays status quo, nice and smooth, public safety stays where it's at, and we've made a commitment to public safety that we don't deviate from. And I know this council, and I know we've talked about public safety for, for all the years I've been on this council, and I know how everybody feels, and that's where everything starts, no one's going to compromise public safety. So if you make the commitment to not compromise in public safety, if revenues stay flat, where do you get the money? And I'm personally speaking, I'm wholly against any type of tax measure. I mean, the people, you know, did Measure C, and I think it was absolutely fortuitous that they did it, but in these economic times, our citizens are also experiencing rough economic times, so hopefully, and I'll close with this, good economic times come, and none of this matters, okay? And revenues start to become severely superior to expenditures, and we can cover the rate increases, or we just have to get extremely creative, but this is the time, this year, not four years from now, to begin to look at things. And just a couple more things, I mentioned at the budget workshop, need to look at the events at the community theater. If we're spending, I think we're running, what are we, about a half a million in the hole on that one? About a half a million. So at the community theater, if we have ten people in attendance before an event, or three people in attendance for the event, then it becomes a park and rec program for the theater group, they need to move it somewhere else. And maybe they hold it in a room at the rec center or somewhere else. We need to start looking at those things and how we're augmenting those funding. It's tough, it's painful, but it's got to be done, or we would be remiss in our duties, so I'm not going to, again, go down the litany of list of things to look at, but Mr. City Manager, I know this council member, and I think my colleagues will agree, you need to start coming, coming up with those measures. No, and you can start from where you think they're the most significant to the least significant, and not to overplay what I'm saying, but if you can change out light bulbs, you do that, okay? I know that sounds kind of silly, but frankly, you know, you could probably, in electricity cost-cutting measures, turning off lights, things like that, save ten grand a year, you know, you save ten, ten grands a year, it's a hundred thousand dollars, it's a park and rec program, it just is what it is. Anyway, that's my long-winded comments, but we have our work cut out for us this next fiscal year to continue to work on these things.
Mr. Washington.
And Mike, I just want to add a footnote to something you said early in your comments. I think it's important to note, because it's my sense that the vast majority of our constituents don't, or not, or are not aware, that those things that you see in that pie chart that make up revenues for us, we as a city have no authority, we don't, we don't regulate an income tax, we have no ability to control property tax and its rate, we are a recipient based on the rate that's collected by the state, by the county center of the state, some comes back to us. Sales tax, fifty percent of our budget, and yet, again, we'll wait for Mr. Roberts to finish his phone call.
You need to get that, Mr. Roberts.
It says alarm clock.
But, but we as a, as a public agency still have the responsibility to manage the funds that we have to work with and stay within those budget constraints. And again, everyone's thanked staff for their hard work, and the council has made it known at our budget workshop and beyond what our priorities are, but as long as I've been here now, it's been eleven years, we've all always operated with a balanced budget, and, and just, and Mike, you and I talk about this all the time, our own personal budgets at home, I apply the same principles here that I apply at home. I don't spend more than I have to spend, it just isn't prudent to do so. But, but I just wanted to highlight that point, that the city, the only, only collection of monies that we actually have jurisdiction over are those fees that, that we implement to recover the cost of providing that service. Sales tax, we don't regulate, we have no income tax, property tax, we don't regulate, and yet, we have continued through our twenty-five years to manage a budget and provide, I think, an excellent level of service for our constituents.
With the money that comes to us.
Yes.
Mr. Comatero.
Thank you. Mike, I want to address something you said, and I got to tell you, I agree a hundred percent with, with what you said, but should also be noted that this is the first time in our history of five-year forecasting on our budgets that we show that we go negative in any of the years, in this case, year five. We don't go negative by very much, but it is a wake-up call, and that's the reason that we look out five years, to be able to identify those flashpoints, so what looks like today is going to happen five years from now, won't happen, and we won't let it happen. But it should also be noted that, I think for every year I've been here, and I'm not going to say how many years it's been, Chuck, but it's been a long time, and, but every year, and I think every year we've been in existence, our expenditures come in a little bit lower than our budget, and our revenue comes in sometimes substantially higher than we're forecasting, because we forecast very conservatively. And so my guess, and admittedly, it's a guess, is if we did nothing, we would not be negative in year five, but that's not why we forecast. We forecast to make sure, if it's going to be okay in year five, let's make it better, because let's be prudent enough to make sure we handle it now. So while I don't expect we'll be negative in year five, we better well-plan for it if we do, and that's the purpose of the exercise.
Mike.
In fact, thanks for that clarity, because I by no means want to be alarmist, okay? And, and, and so I think you've, you've Comateroed me in that, in that regard again, and that's good. Don't want to be alarmist, I, I know we're all conservative here, and the way that we've, we've managed the budgets over the years have resulted in where we're at, and we're going to continue to do that, so what you're seeing come to the top is all of our conservative budgeting, and we're just not going to allow that to occur. One other thing that I, I think also bears mention is our, our tourism economic development. Now, that is, that has blossomed into, what is that now, in millions?
Twenty-five.
Six-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollar a year industry, and so we've been able to stimulate that, so our businesses are thriving because of what we've done here as a city, and, and that's been a big part of our budget as well, and it is a big part of our budget, so, yeah, and it's, and it's still growing, so.
To our Convention and Visitors Bureau and our, our economic development.
Absolutely. We, we pour a lot of our budget into that, and so if somebody said that you can invest a hundred and get six hundred back, you would do that in a heartbeat, and that's what we do with our tourism dollars, and a lot of that is reflected here in this budget as well. So a lot of good stuff, we just have to be prudent.
I will add that during the height of the recession, and it was, I don't know, before Mr. Nelson left, there was a time when we projected a budget, and we realized that within a couple of years, we were going to have a deficit. We looked at what revenues were doing, and we saw that they were tanking and rapidly, and other cities did not make that course correction, and they came up short within the next year and a half. So we made an immediate course correction within that eighteen months, if you will remember, and it was a drastic change that was covered by all the newspapers, and Temecula was one of the only cities that ended up, over that eighteen-month period or so, with a balanced budget at the end of that year, and other cities ended up far in the red and had to dip into any reserves that they had, so even in the short term, we were able to make that change, so, and it takes a very talented city staff and a council willing to make those changes rapidly, so I can say we're always willing to do that, we will not allow the city to go into deficit mode. So thank you, staff, for working very hard, and this is a different environment for us, and thank you, we've succeeded once again in looking out into the future for, on behalf of the residents, so, very good. And did we all cast our votes, ever? We've had a motion second on the floor forever. And it is unanimous, thank you. All right, we're going to move on finally to item number thirty, and the last item, formation and appointment of an ad hoc subcommittee for strategic fiscal planning. Can we just have a really brief overview of what this is?
Yeah, real briefly, Madam Mayor, consistent with everything the city council just discussed, and having the foresight to look out sixty months, staff is recommending that the city council appoint an ad hoc subcommittee for, to discuss some strategic fiscal initiatives beginning immediately, and, and this would be something that we would probably envision convening throughout the year prior to budget, but of course, anything that comes out of subcommittee would be rolled into the budget and considered with full council, so things like public safety, things like pavement management, and things like escalating, you know, personnel costs or capital projects, these are things that we'd like to discuss with two policymakers throughout the year as needed and get further direction, so tonight we're seeking two members of the council to join in an ad hoc subcommittee. So tonight, we're seeking two members of the council to join in an ad hoc subcommittee.
And this is along those same lines. It's kind of being ever-ready to make decisions in a hurry, two people that can sit down with staff and go over things and be ready to make a recommendation.
I move Mayor Edwards and Mayor Protem Comacher.
I'm willing to go there. Okay, so I have a motion in a second.
Does that also, there were two items on, so it'd be the recommended action, naming those two people.
That's correct.
Okay. So the motion is second for?
So forming the subcommittee and naming those two.
Yes.
Forming the subcommittee?
And that's my motion.
I'll second that.
All right, then, so go ahead and cast your votes. And that's 5-0, so thank you very much. All right, so seeing nothing further, then do we have anything else?
Just one final thing. I wanted to thank the city council for your support over the last three or four months as we presented what was a very, maybe different approach, a very different insight with the new executive management team, and I just wanted to say thank you for your support this evening for this budget and these budgets. And I'd also like to give thanks to all the directors, the analysts, and the city staff that work diligently. Heidi, thank you, and really, something we can all be proud of, and I appreciate everybody's help.
You've done a great job, Erin, and welcome to all the newbie city staff members. You've all had your hazings, and everything's complete now, so I think everybody's part of the team. And seeing nothing further, I would accept, Peter, you have anything?
Yes, just quickly, in the closed session tonight, you did give direction to the city's negotiators, but there is nothing to report under the Brown Act for any actions taken.
All right, thank you, and I would say to Mike.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'm going to move adjournment, but Councilmember Washington brought up a good issue earlier today regarding D-Day, and so in memory of D-Day, I move we adjourn.
And thank you for that. So let us move in remembrance of all those who gave their lives at that D-Day. So thank you very much. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And the meeting stands adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.